Our dear heavenly Father, we come to you with Public Works tonight to thank you for the way in which you have blessed us. We thank you for the, shall we say, upcoming change in seasons. We are grateful for it all, your perfect creation. And we pray for Dennis tonight. He's going through some family trials. Thank you for his taking care of his family the way he does. Pray for all of you who are sick in our town, that you bring them good health and just keep everyone safe. And yes, thank you for love in Christ's name. Amen.
In the United States of America, and to the public, which contains one nation of God, and his soul, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first public comment period is for any matter that you would like to bring to us tonight. We've given three minutes. Come back and give it to our department. Dear None, I want to announce a couple of changes to the agenda before we ask for a motion. Items number two and four of the consent agenda are to be brought down under the old business. So I'm not going to call out any renumbering of those, just so I know that that is the change. So with the stated changes, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Senator.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items one, three, and five?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now let's move to what appears on your agenda. It's item number two on consent agenda, but it's number one in your own business.
Thanks, sir. I wanted to have that place for discussion because there were a couple of changes that had come out since the agenda was published. Wanted some clarification from Linda on, we have on the cover sheet, April 20th for the Spring Festival, that's Easter Sunday.
It is April 12.
April 12.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So for the Tyrone Spring Festival, there's no tenure packet that is April 12. And then on October 4th, for Founder's Day in your packet, the event was scheduled for 4:00 to 8:00, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Linda and I talked about that because the parade was also going to stay the same as it normally is during midday. So the change now is that the festival is scheduled as normal as it has been in the past. So the festival will start to be at the bottom of the parade. Is that, is that everything?
It sure is. Thank you.
Have we determined whether this is, have we determined whether this is the 50th year or not? Because I've heard-
It is not.
It is not. Okay. So officially, what year is it?
The next year.
Yes.
It started in, the first one was in 76.
So it's the 49th year.
We've got a lot, thanks Randy, for next year now.
Okay.
Yeah, it started in 76.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So we've got those two changes on that staff report. And so we will now take a motion to adopt that.
I make a motion that we adopt the changes with what we just spoke about for the staff report with the town events of Tyrone's town events for 2025.
Second. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we'll take up item number four on consent agenda. Campbell, you asked me to pull that, so-
I did. I did. It's been a concern of mine for quite some time, but there's just a few things that we have here. What, would it be okay if I asked you this question?
Sure.
Okay. What is the actual, we'll sum up so that we can just clarify some things here.
I will.
Thank you. The actual length of the baseball season is when it started, what, March 6th? Am I correct on that?
Yes, sir.
And when does it actually end?
When does it end?
May 22nd?
The spring.
For the spring season.
Okay.
That's the spring.
So my question is, is that from, what's the purpose of the, why do we have a contract through the December 31st then?
Because of spring and fall. We just don't have two for the same year. So we just have one contract that covers both seasons, spring and fall.
We've always done-
Yes, sir. It's been that way at least for 18 years.
One of my concerns is that I see teams out there practicing during the, during, after the season, if you will, even in the spring. Who are these teams that are out there practicing?
If the fields are not being used by TYBA, they are, anybody's allowed to go in there.
These are actual organized teams. They've got uniforms on and they're out there practicing.
They are, they could be travel teams. Not to my knowledge. Do you know of anybody that's using your field?
No. Well, I mean, there's people from Tyrone that use them. There's going to be guys that have uniforms, but they might be three people, four, full teams. But a lot of them are Tyrone residents that come in and play. And a lot of them are teams that played during the spring and during the, during the fall. And they still have their uniforms and they just come in and practice and play. Yeah.
Thank you. That's cool.
I think the key, may I ask a question?
Please.
I think the key is to make sure that if it's an organized team, they are paying TYBA the fee that they're supposed to pay for-
That's true. They should be paying them a fee.
They do. Yes, including that.
They should, they should be.
They should be, but, but because of their residency, they're residents of Tyrone, we don't charge them because that's always been what we've done. But if it's an organized team, they get paid. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think that as an organization, we need to do more to advertise what we're doing, to invite more students. I mean, we've got, you've got, what, nine teams from 4U to 14U?
Yes.
And that's it?
Yes.
And so at best, we've got 100 kids or less that are involved.
Just a few more.
How many of those, and this is a rhetorical question, I don't expect you to know the answer. How many of those are actual Tyroleanians? How many are we bringing in from the outside? And why, why do we only have nine teams? Is there that lack of interest in baseball and in period? I just think, I mean comparatively to other towns, and obviously they're going to be bigger than us, you've got a place like Sharpsburg, which is probably, what, three times the size of ours.
Well, then the town itself is not, but the area is originally.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, they've got 68 teams for that same age group. And I don't expect us to have that, but I'm just thinking that we need to do more. I don't see signs like we used to see all over when registration is and trying, going to Birch or to Flat Rock or to wherever to advertise and try to draw those students out.
We should definitely pump it up.
Because this is, this is our town. And this is what the kids are supposed to have, is an opportunity to play.
Right.
And, you know, of course, I just don't see that effort being put in. And that's a little disturbing to me. I mean, it wasn't that long ago, I coached the three and four year olds there. And I mean, we had, you couldn't get into the park because there were so many Tyroleanians in there or people, you know, from our town playing from three years old all the way up to, you know, 15 and 16 year olds. So, and I would like to see that again if, if it's there.
We can definitely pursue that. That's a good idea. Thank you.
Okay. And part of this contract is keeping people off the grass when they're parking. And I know that's difficult for the coaches and the people, but they're all up, they're on that grass, especially, you know, up towards the bigger courses. I see that, I just drove down there again. You've got not only the dog walkers that park all over the grass, but you've got, you know, families that are sitting there in their car, watching the game from their car. And we can't grow any grass and right next to the do not parking sign. Anyway.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for letting me.
Thanks.
Is there anything you-
Oh, no, sir. We will get pissy on advertising more.
Thank you.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, if you have any questions, all right, then we will take a motion on item number four to approve the TYBA field use agreement for 2025.
I make a motion that we approve the TYBA field use agreement for 2025.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. And now when we move on to item number six on underhold business.
Thanks, sir. This is a consideration of a new policy governing special events at Redwine Park Pickleball Facility. At the last meeting, we had this discussion under staff comments, and we were asked to develop a draft policy to bring back to you guys in a future meeting. I went ahead and put those, that draft together the last week, sent it to you all in the packet, and looking back, I'm very amused. I reached out, or didn't reach out, I researched online and found what policies I could and had other governments that were similar to this and kind of tried to put something together that would work for us at our facility. And that's what I've included. We can find special events as any organized activity that's open to the public and having as its purpose fundraising, entertainment, or recreation. Activities that are not open to the public are considered private events. It will not be permitted at Redwine Park Facility. And then I have a, I have ten conditions there that are pretty routine, I think. One of those being a requirement to have a minimum of a million dollars in insurance and have the town listed as a additional insurer. Outside of that, the other provisions are pretty straightforward. Any additions, deductions?
I think it's a great start.
Okay. The next thing I'll have to do once this is approved is I'll work with number one, I want, I want maybe a forward review of it. Also, we'll have to come up with some sort of a registration form that they'll turn to Linda that will keep on record. So.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we, that we approve the new policy governing special events at Redwine Park Pickleball Facility.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Scott, your own deck.
Anybody counsel?
Good evening.
Good evening. The first we have is the consideration to approve the Tulmore-Greencastle multi-use path plans. They're at the 90% stage. And we're wanting approval for this to move forward with land acquisition. There is a connector, this is a connection from Maple Shade to the all the way to Sonoya Road once we finish this and the East Crestwood multi-use path. As part of this project, basically, this is running down the, coming out of Kellsworth, out of Tulmore subdivision, going down the D cell lane, excuse me, XL lane, crossing over Dogwood Trail, coming back towards Green Castle, and then turning into Green Castle. As a result of this, there's a little bit of temporary construction easement that we need. It's approximately 0.131 acres total. And there is a permanent easement for a riprap area on a discharge of a pipe that is at basically 0.004 acres, very small pieces of property. None of this is fee simple, it's all easement. This is coming out of the general funds and the 2023 s lost. And staff requests approving the Tulmore-Greencastle multi-use path plans, project number PW 202407, and for staff to start the land acquisition process with our legal counsel.
Any questions for Scott?
Scott, could you show us exactly where that land eas, where the easement is or, you know, the land acquisition that you're referring to?
Brandon, if you scrolled to another page, it's highlighted.
So on page 13001?
Oh, there we go. Is that everything?
That's the first page. See the next page. So 13001, the yellow section that you see on there?
Yeah.
Right here. That is a temporary construction easement for some fill material. And on the next page, that yellow is also temporary construction easement, once again, to do some fill work and grading. And then the pink color, purple pink color, it's a pink highlighter, believe it or not, is the riprap area coming from that special catch basin. That special catch basin is catching the water off, off the new curb, pulling it underneath the sidewalk and then discharging into the riprap area.
So we won't own the yellow, it's just the temporary easement?
That's correct. We will not own that. The only thing we'll have access, we will not own the, the pink area either, but we'll have the ability to maintain our facilities there and have a stormwater facility there.
Thank you.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Tulmore-Greencastle multi-use path plans, project number PW dash 2024 dash 07, and start the land acquisition process.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next.
All right. The next one is a consideration to award the 2025 sidewalk repair project. It's project number PW 202502 to Bostic and Bostic Associates and Associates in the amount of $38,100. Basically, this project is our continuing effort to improve our, our safety and maintain our, our sidewalks, infrastructure. The sections are in Windsong, River Crest, Irish Village, Ash Park, Millbrook Village, and Veterans Park. Just so you know, most of these are results of people riding over the concrete with vehicles, whether it's like landscaping companies or other people who, you know, and was on trouble, were pulled up on top of it, or people pulling their car up there for some reason. But that's what we see. The other thing is sometimes we find them, especially around the catch basin, you'll find there's like crowding issues. Inside the catch basin, the soil started creating a sinkhole, or the soil was not compacted well during construction, when they backfilled up against this. So as a result of this, this project was approximately 13,000 under budget, and it's coming out of our general fund account, the 140522208. The staff requests award 2025 sidewalk project, project number PW 202502 to Bostic, Bostic and Associates in the amount of $38,100.
Any questions?
You know these people, Scott?
I do not know them personally. Don't look for them.
I'll make a motion to award the 2025 sidewalk repairs, project number PW dash 2025 dash 02 to Bostic slash Bostic and Associates in the amount of $38,100. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number nine.
All right. So this one is the Handley Park barn, the full barn. That's, if you remember the three lots that are along Handley Road, this is the barn that threatens, just inside the wood line. This, this barn has continued to deteriorate over the last few years, or basically since it's been here, I've been watching it fully deteriorate. And there's a lot of debris coming down and hazards, you'll see on some of the pictures that were attached to it, where you have some things that are actually, you know, like hanging from, hanging from the structure. We've also found a little bit of trash around it, some beer bottles and things like that. So anyway, as a result of that, there's also some barbed wire and other things on the ground that we all need to take out. And so we want to just remove the structure at this point in time and clean up the whole area. This area also has potential for when we do our trail through the woods, our walking trail.
Good. Any questions?
Will Public Works do this work?
This particular one, we'll do a lot of the cleanup down on the ground, but this, this structure is really high. And it's some pretty large timbers and stuff. So I'd feel more comfortable if we hired this one out to a firm that can take those down from those heights. All we have is a bucket truck. We don't have any way to actually support, support the lumber when you pull the bolts out of it. I don't want it to fall in person, but-
So we haven't put this out for bid at this point?
No, no. This is just, this is just consideration to do the demolition. So that's what staff is recommending here, is we're recommending approval to, or your approval to allow us to go through the demolition process and legally dispose of it.
Do you have an estimate for counsel? What, what do you think it costs to build this out, hardens out?
Yeah, I'm thinking this is probably around 10,000 to 15,000.
Sounds cheap.
That's just going to get the equipment out here to do it.
All right. Any more questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider performing demolition on Tulmore and Handley Park.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Number 10.
All right. So the next one is consideration for the color selection of the Handley Park Public Works Maintenance Facility. You will find attached to your documents, and also there was a handout that I gave you earlier of a color chart. This facility, as you know, is being built for our equipment. The color selections that we were looking at for this was the classic green and the ash gray. Basically, our goal here is to, as much as possible, match the existing building that's out there. I will say that the color of the concrete split base block of the existing building is a very light color. So the ash gray is a little bit darker than that. But it's almost the white colors on this form. So you'll see there's several circles here. There's up in the signature 200, there's a white and ash gray and ivy green and evergreen. It's four there. And under the signature 300, which is a different finish, there's bone white, classic green, and tundra. The tundra is probably a little too dark. And then, believe it or not, based off of this, so this is an actual color sample of the metal, based off of this, we're recommending somewhere in those shades to match the existing facility. And we, if y'all like that color pattern of sticking with the gray and the green, we'll actually order samples of the metal with the, with the finishes and everything on it. So we can go out there, take these and match exact, try to get as close as we can to the existing. And if you guys are good with that, then we'll just move forward, unless you want us to bring it back to you again. We can do that too.
What color are the doors on the existing building? If I do remember correctly?
They are. They're actually a lighter green. They're a different color from the version of the-
Brandon, it's on the next page.
Picture attached to your package that was supposed to be one. So you see that in this picture, counsel?
Yeah, I see it.
Okay. So there, there's a, you can see the different color just there in the trim and the darker green. And we were going to go with that darker color. Because they really don't have a light green like that in their color selection.
That almost looks like Kelly green.
I like the darker green anyway.
Yeah, me too. So anyway, so staff recommends the color selection for the Handley Park Barn or Public Works Maintenance Facility, to match the existing buildings as much as possible, preliminary recommendations, as follows, the roof, classic green, walls, ash gray, and trim and doors, classic green.
Can I get a motion to approve that?
I make a motion to approve the color as selected, with the circles indicated on this, so you can get the samples and make the best decision when you actually get on site. Is that a long motion?
Long. Got it. Got it. Got it. Got a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number 11.
Okay. So the next one is also at Handley Park. It's a consideration to perform demolition of the corn crib. This structure, just in the last few years, you've seen significant change. In 2023, do you guys have 2023 pictures up there?
Yes.
You do. Okay. If you look at the 2023 picture, that looks like this, where you can see the part of the wall is starting to collapse. And you can see there's a gap down here towards the bottom where there's a board, it's like a piece of board missing. Okay. And then, Brandon, if you could go to the picture of 2025, that looks like this, as you can see, I'm, I'm going to step up here so y'all can see, it's a little dark. So this down here is the gap in the board. So in 2023, two years ago, it's up here. Now it's down here. So this building is almost completely pulling apart in half. And then, Brandon, there's another picture that shows the building from the side that you had up that shows it's, how it's leaning and stuff. The next one, let's try that one. Okay, right there, you can see how that wall is starting to bend and curve out. So this whole building is basically racking down. So it's in, it's in pretty bad shape and it needs to be taken down. There's also some barbed wire out there and stuff like that around the site that we'd like to get up out of, off the ground, so.
Where's it going? It's not like right on-
Yes, ma'am.
I'm assuming that our Public Works Department is going to do most of the work on this one?
Yes, this one, we will absolutely do the work on it, yes, sir.
Well, I make a motion that we consider to perform demolition on the corn crib at Handley Park.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, item number-
But Scott, I'm, I'm prepared to help. There was a little bit of change on this one today. So as the item reads currently, you're looking at both sanitary sewer and stormwater access agreement. That is not what was originally anticipated here. It is exclusively sanitary sewer. There is no stormwater involved. The documents have been updated and I talked to the attorney today. I'm going to let Scott explain the project. I just wanted to let you guys know, stormwater is not a part of what you're considering.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. So this consideration is to approve and execute, to approve and allow the mayor to execute a sanitary sewer maintenance easement. Basically, at 1400 Sonoya Road, which is owned by 74 South LLC, they put in a building there, placed two more buildings in, and there's a sewer line that was connecting it, taking the sewer from there, Sonoya Road, back through, over the railroad's curb and through the county's fire department property to get home station number two. So all of everything but the actual 1400 Sonoya Road property, we have easements on it and have rights assigned to us. This only, this property is the last property that we're trying to get this, this wrapped up in. And like Alan said, it was sent to us as both stormwater and sewer. And you'll see in my stuff, we specifically say that the town's not going to own the stormwater system, it is the property owner's responsibility. So now with the new documents, all that's taken, stormwater stuff's taken out, and we have the sanitary sewer is going to be by itself. And then we also have already our standard of stormwater maintenance agreement that is on this property that allows us to go in and inspect, to make sure that the property owners are maintaining their stormwater system. So it's a little tricky, but it was a rush. They're trying to get their certificate of occupancy because they have people, you know, lined up, ready to go. And this was a big ticket item that they were, they were missing. One of, one of two.
I think this has been in the works for about three years. So they're trying to wrap it up, and I understood. But the document that's in the package is not what you'll be executing. I will have to get you a clean document. It was changed today.
And the reason we don't, we're not considering the stormwater, the fact that it's not, is that we already knew that.
Right. And that's already been done. It's ready for filing, is my understanding. Patrick took care of that. And so that's just a separate piece of information. This requires easements and the transfer of property and, and access rights that is completely separate from stormwater.
Right. So you guys have actually already approved the stormwater maintenance agreement in a previous meeting. So yeah, that's, that's pretty much set in stone. I know we wanted to say that way.
Okay. So is there a document that we are approving tonight and I'm signing?
You can't sign it tonight. I do not have that one with me. It was done today as far as updating it to remove everything that referenced stormwater. That had to be done. But I will have that over tomorrow for you to sign. But yes, you do need to approve that.
So our recommendation there, if staff recommends authorizing mayor dial to execute the easement- the easement subject to the receipt of the final documents prepared to the staff satisfaction for the purpose of finalizing the easement prior to the facility's certificate of occupancy. So this is, this is not declaring that it's for stormwater, it's just saying the easement referring to the sewer easement.
May I just ask council to say so moved to what, to what he said?
I just have one question.
We, we did that, okay. Is, is it okay if we do that?
That will work.
Okay, can I get a motion to that?
I make a motion.
We got four.
Yeah.
We got a motion and from Ms. Furr, and so that's, all right, now discussion.
I just have one question. So what, what we're approving here, the sanitary sewer, will that cover the, the two remaining buildings that are going to be placed? They're not having separate ones for each one of those buildings, are they?
That's correct. The sewer system that's been put in place, the main life that goes all the way back to the fire station, but there's a collection system for, from all three buildings that will come into our system. And also, the reason why we did this is that sewer line runs all the way out to Sonoya Road, so that in the future, if anybody in the Sonoya Park commercial area up there wants to tie in, it gives an opportunity to, to tie into that, or anybody else who wants to get on there, so, you know, like, I don't know.
Sonic.
Sonic or somebody like that, or whatever, one of the, the building, the other little commercial building or building. If any of them want to try to get their sewer up there, and are willing to, to pay to do that, then it gives them a place to get to, for now they can get to the pump station.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Back to you, Brandon.
I'll spot here, all right. Last thing that I have is a consideration of updates to the county travel policy. The current policy been in effect twenty ten is part of our employee handbook. And over the last eighteen months or so, I've been going through the handbook, updating policies, and then as I get them updated, sending them to either Sandy and Dennis, or just Dennis, depending on the, the policy review, and then implementing Dennis's recommended changes. So anyways, quite a process sometimes. So anyway, the, the, we just got to the travel policy, which, like I said, it was, it's a bulky policy, and it has not been significantly updated. It says twenty ten was the last update, but this policy is probably a little bit over the years. There is no mention in the current policy of, of Uber or Lyft, which are used a lot more often nowadays, and it actually has references to taxis and limos and the old, which, you know. So anyway, we've made some updates. I sent you all the red line version, so you should have been able to see kind of, did you not get the red line?
Yeah.
Okay. You did. I sent it out separately, because when I, when I take the red line version and put it in the Munich code, it, it, it takes the red lines out, and you can't stop it from doing that, so I sent you guys the, the red line. I hope everybody got it, or I hope, I think you said you did not.
Well, I, Dee had me go through the, through the, through the packet, through the website, so it wasn't, that's why I didn't get it, but I will, I will, I'm sure I have.
If you don't, let me know. But, um.
So that will explain the exact changes.
Right, it'll show you something, you know, kind of, you know, what's been marked out, what's been added.
Thank you.
And all of that. If there's any questions, I'm ready to answer them. Other than that, I don't feel like, y'all need to, need to go word for words with that update policy.
Just, just, I, I, I have a couple questions. One is, you know, you talk about the town manager or the chief of police approves the required, who approves yours or the chiefs?
So I would approve the chiefs. Mine is approved at the, at the time of budgeting. Like, I, I will put in there, like, any conferences or whatever that I need to go to for the year. So it's kind of two-faced. For me, under my contract, you know, there's conferences or, or providers part of the contract, and then I put those conferences or any kind of travel into the, the budget, and then you guys approve that, so that's, that's how that typically works.
Right. And then within, in the next line, it says, why, why town officials are not required to obtain approval for business-related travel?
Which, what part are you?
Right, uh, page three of nine. It just.
Which, which section?
Up on top, where it says elected and appointed, right there, are not required to obtain approval for business-related travel.
So that was a request that Dennis put in, that was a suggestion that he made, because I actually had that put in there, where it just said, all town travelers. So, pretty much because like, there's nobody, you know, there's no oversight over elected officials, you guys have a travel budget.
Yeah, the budget is what?
Right, the budget's the governor does.
Right.
And then your, your appointed officials, somebody like Dennis or Judge or somebody like that, they can put a request in. Dennis never requests reimbursement, to my knowledge, for travel. I believe we do pay some reimbursements for the judge. Those requests come through as a purchase request through April, and they get, kind of get approved that way. But Dennis's recommendation was to take elected officials and appointed officials treated a little bit differently because of the way, kind of, everything works, the way you guys are set up as a legal, from a legal standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Is there a motion to this pause, for this pause?
Make a motion that we approve the updates to the town's travel policy, as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there any public comment now? Anybody like to speak about anything we've discussed tonight, or anything else that's popped into your head? You have three minutes to do so. Same rules apply. Okay. Any none? Thank you to all the staff members that are here tonight, taking time out of your days to do so. And are there any staff comments?
We have a couple.
Doing fine.
Sure. Just wanted to follow up on the Tullamore Trail Crossing. I wanted to let council know, we did, we did have a conversation with the Tullamore Neighborhood, with Mr. Buddy Hay, the president, and Jeff Duncan, actually, his own planning commission, lives there as well and is associated with the HOA. And we did have a discussion about the reconfiguring of their front entrance to accommodate this path and certain elements, to try and work with the homeowners association, because it will affect their entrance. So we had some discussions about some slight modifications that can be made just regarding landscaping, some realignment of some sidewalk and curb and different elements like that. Things that we set the expectation, we can't really make any significant budget changes over, but some discussions that would be relatively budget neutral, that we're going to do some more detailed analysis on, and if it's any kind of, you know, budgetary change, either significant in one way or the other, we would, we would let you know, but nothing significant that we had a discussion with them on in regards to changing of the plans that were approved, and certainly nothing that changes the land acquisition side of things. So did want to let you know that we were in communication with the HOA and just kind of trying to keep, keep their interest, you know, as a part of the, the project.
Philip, remind us the, where we are with that, the multi-use path that goes from Bayway Court to Tullamore?
Yeah, so that project is going to be separate from this trail crossing, but that is, we have, we have prescriptive easement in that location, as well as at the end of Market Hills Business Park that goes into Maple Shade. Those two sections are probably going to be bundled into a single project when we go to repave, and we do intend to repave those and, and get, get them up to, you know, our standard.
Very good, thank you.
Go ahead, Scott.
All right, on the, going back to the Handley Boulevard, wanted to let you know that construction's actually starting on three twenty-four. On my desk, so they'll be bringing in some of their stormwater BMPs and things like that. On the Joel Calhoun Parkway, we had a pre-con meeting yesterday. The start date has not been set on that yet, because we have to get some things straightened out with GOT, but traffic control, there will be a lane closure for a couple of days on SR seventy-four for the north side of the, of the town limits, near Fairber. That's the southbound side coming from Fairber to towards Peachtree City. Also, the roundabout pre-con is scheduled for March twenty-sixth at nine AM to get that starting to roll. What it does, primarily, primarily you'll see utilities doing their stuff first, so there'll be some coordination, so that takes a little while for it to get off the ground with the utility companies, because they are scheduling, figuring out their product, you know, what they need to do, move, and stuff like that. All of them have been coordinating this with them for over a year now, so hopefully it will move pretty quickly. But that can take a little while before they actually start moving tons of dirt, things like that, so if you see that. Payment marking, that's ready to start any day now, just waiting for the call being told me when they're coming. Everything's, notice proceed, everything's out on that one. Dogwood tip, we're waiting to, GOT notes to proceed, they have to issue that to Faya County, and then they'll start that project. And actually, Dogwood, as I told you before, it's the first one on the list, so we'll be starting that up hopefully soon, next few weeks, as soon as we get to GOT. Lastly, today, the good news came out about GOT is issuing a L-MIG for twenty twenty-five to L-MIG supplemental. Tyrone's portion of that is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars and forty-five cents, and that is a no-match, so that's completely money for us to ask there.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
I have one more thing, just real quick. Just a reminder, our planning workshop is next Thursday at nine, here at Town Hall. We'll get your agenda out probably tomorrow, which is, it's not going to be like normal agendas, it'll be like in the past of this workshop, which is basically the, the rundown of the meeting. But, so it'll be very few things in the packet, it'll just be presentations on the screens when you're here. But yeah, we'll get that out to you hopefully tomorrow.
Okay, so. Any other staff comments? Any council comments?
I just want to say it was a lot of work that went into preparing all of these items, Scott, thank you for all of that.
Pleasure, sir.
I had a conversation with the Peachtree City resident, he was very excited about this multi-use path that's going to come from Maple Shade, because she considers Tarron Post Office, her post office, and she's very excited to know that that's going to be reopened, and that she also enjoys eating at the bistro over here at Shea, She, sorry, and then that's her, one of her very favorite restaurants, so just wanted to compliment the town on having an attractive, and for Peachtree City to come here, because sometimes we talk about going there a lot, but they want to come here as well.
Speaking of the post office, I did see trucks out there yesterday, the next, I didn't get a chance to stop and talk and find out what's going on with their, were construction trucks there yesterday, so, or a couple days ago.
And I spoke with Congressman Jack yesterday about the post office, he wanted to know what's going on, and I told him if he knew, it'd be great if he informed us, because they're sure not, and he was going to make an up call. And then today, I was at the post office, Peachtree City, and they had no clue. That's my date on the post office.
I would like to congratulate Sandy Creek for completing the three-peat of men's basketball team in high school, so it was fantastic.
Bigger conversation.
Brandon, is there an update on the emergency entrance at Chalmers Industrial Bar?
I actually talked to the gentleman today, I, I think I, I had mentioned in a preview, you know, last week or week before, what we've been updating. We are getting ready to send them some, an NMOU that they want their HOA to learn to see. So their HOA has been made aware of, you know, what we're wanting to do, we've been with them on site, we've shown them, you know, the connection, what our, what our plans are, and we've shown them the documentation for Peachtree City from the annexation and our easement and the, the ownership of that property. They're, they've been easy to work with at this point, at least our contact has. He, he, he describes the situation as, you know, the HOA has basically accepted, you know, that, that it has to happen, they don't love the idea, but they, they accept it. And my goal was to get that MOU to him in the next couple of business days, we're going to go ahead and work on budgeting for, putting, rebudgeting for the project for next year. And yeah, we should be able to get an MOU approved and signed, you know, probably in the next couple of months, and then we can start working on the project next fiscal year.
And I do have that MOU drafted, the latest email from them, I want to make sure that I accommodate any reasonable requests they had from that email today, but I should get that out tomorrow.
Hopefully, hopefully quickly. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Counselor, is there a need for executive session?
There is not.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.